Thank you.
Alright, good evening. It is six oh five on Monday, April the eighth. This is Robert Stevenson. I'm going to call to order the South Vicolic Ranville Regional School District School Committee meeting for this evening. Can I get a motion to enter into the meeting? All in favor, enter into the meeting. There we go. Thank you. Aaron let the record show the moment passed at six zero zero. Can I get everybody to please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, set the agenda tonight. The fundraiser for the drum club, out of state field trip to go to the 911 museum, and a home education proposal. But any issues to pull that out? Alright, fantastic. Warren, we have a couple of things here that need to be signed for everybody leaves tonight. Horace Bonnet, Superintendent Willard, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do know.
Alright. We are just a little update. We are moving our public comment till later in the evenings. In fact, right now, I don't have anybody signed up, so that won't really make a big difference tonight. Student advisory board, Meg Olley, you're up.
Perfect. So the first set of M-CAS went really well. That was at the end of March. We're looking forward to the second. It's the math M-CAS now, May twenty first and the twenty second, and then the physics M-CAS for the second semester freshman. They split it up. We'll be on June fourth and fifth. The physics M-CAS does not constitute the high school schedule, but the math M-CAS will, so we do a three hour limit. Um, this one's really funny. Let me guess around this one. Uh, the musical went very well last weekend with hundreds of community members attending, many of which complimented our amazing production and our dedication to representing the beauty of Jewish culture onstage. Set strike to take down the stages tomorrow as well. Alright. So Connections has been doing a lot. It's really kicked up. So we spent the final week of March working on the eighth grade facilitations. We also made a bulletin board on their divergence and autism awareness, which is this month. Um, the facilitations will be in three rounds, so there's three different lessons, two groups per lesson, so we tackle the two sets of eighth graders. Um, the first is on April twenty fourth, that's Wednesday. It's about understanding bias and bullying. The second is on Thursday, April twenty fifth. It's about challenging bias and bullying. And the third is on April twenty sixth, about steps towards change. Each lesson is thoughtfully created by the students to focus on different problem areas within our schools, specifically the middle school, and act in a preventative manner with education on our own biases, implicit and explicit, identifying bullying behaviors within ourselves and others, and how to speak up in the moment and stop bullying and harassment, or to safely report it to the appropriate person. Um, as we've mentioned before, the hand in district attorney's office will be doing a present apparent presentation on April twenty third about internet and social media safety. I, along with the other Southwick members of the youth advisory board, will be in attendance to help present the information and give student input. There will also be take home pamphlets. These were created by students on the youth advisory board a couple of years ago, and they're updated regularly. So they're basically just all the different apps that students use today. Um, how they're used, what kids do on them, different language there might be on there, and the dangers about them and the safeties about them. Um, the anti, do you want me to speak about the anti-bullying task force?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so we
You can take that off my list.
We had a great session April first tackling the anonymous alerts program, and dividing up to cover the bullying policy, handbook clarification, and looking at and adjusting the curriculum, treating more educated, aware, and inclusive school. We're also planning on having Northeastern University do a presentation of possibly workshop with student athletes, the athletic director and coaches, on bullying and hate sports. That's very prevalent. Um, alongside Students Against Distracted Decisions, SAD, they had plans in February, since that's teen dating and sexual assault violence month. So I went to a youth advisory board meeting, and they have these little cards. You scan them, and they take you to different resources and education on dating, violence, and abusive relationships. These are going to go up within bathrooms for staff and students, so they have privacy if they need to access them. Yes, and then SAD is also working alongside the Southwick Fire and Police Department to create PSA videos on distracted driving for prom week, where we will once again host the district attorney's annual stop the sort of event. They're also planning on having different facts and statistics about drunk and distracted driving each day, leading up to prom, as well as accompanying flyers or bulletin boards to go along with the daily class. We'll also have the rec card in. Um, the DLE reception is tomorrow night for any students who participate in a DLE last semester current. So that's the diversified learning program. You get to, basically, it's an internship. It's really fun. The students, their families, and their mentors are invited to attend where their hard work will be celebrated. The play was a success despite the snowing Thursday. Um, last week, we also celebrated National System Principal's Week by commemorating the system principals, J-Syc and Ruth, working together to build and save and run properly while supporting staff and students. The Prague field trip is going on, I think, for the weekend Friday. And then there will be, for next year, it will be Spain, Madrid, and Andalucía. I don't remember what's that. Um, screening council was in a lemonade sale, so every day they're selling like a dollar for lemonade, and then you get it on April twelfth. It's like the, um, hot shot that you do. And then Project Three Fifty One, Southwick, has spent two weeks collecting new gently-used clothing sizes newborns to adult medium for cradles to creans. Project Three Fifty One is a Massachusetts organization that focuses on community leadership through Massachusetts eighth graders, who lead a year transformative service and leadership that not only strives to help their community, but work to make Massachusetts a better community. As you know, the acres typically have to do a big civics project for that year. We only have one ambassador that would be ready to ask that. In sports, outdoor track and field, the first meet was Friday after reschedule. Um, the girls won, the boys lost. And they're looking forward to their second meet away tomorrow at Chickity High School. Um, it will be at four o'clock. Unified Track and Field has their first meet tomorrow at Chickity Comprehensive High School. There's no difference. It's at three thirty. It can get confusing. Baseball has their fifth league game tonight at Iwo. They won their last game, which was home against Hampshire Regional eight to one. That was on Saturday. They also won their last Tuesday game, twenty-one to two against Palmer High. Um, softball had their first game at Springfield International Charter School and sadly lost, but are looking for redemption at their next game at Granby High tonight, and a home game this Thursday against Chickity High. Across is finally up and running. They have their first official game as a new JV team away against Hampshire Regional. It is during spring break, so I'm assuming it might get rescheduled. Uh, the boys volleyball team is away at Springfield International tonight for their fourth game this season. They won their first opener home, or no, they won their first game against Doug and Academy three to zero. They lost their next, and their home opener against Folio. And they're also looking forward to a lease deadline against Chickity, because that was also noted. And that's all I know.
You sure?
Exactly.
We're gonna need a whole nice piece for you.
Oh, what's going on?
That was fantastic.
Do you know when prom is? Prom is on May eighteenth. It's gonna be at Tupoa. Tickets start on sale at like eighty-five dollars, and they're gonna go up to a hundred, so good luck with that.
I think you're not going to prom?
I am. I'm just not paying a hundred dollars for that. Not worth it.
Get in just eighty-five?
Yeah.
Alright. Educational presentation. Mr. Jacy. You're up.
Sounds good.
Happy podium?
Yeah. Oh, podium, okay.
Happy, no, it's fine. Happy related assistant principal week.
Thank you so much. I also have to reiterate, though, I saw the fiddler on the roof. That present, oh man, it was so good. It went on opening night, and they did really fantastic, and it's really cool, too, to see like a pit band. And it looks like real live music. I mean, it is, it's something to see. So that was really, really excellent. I was, uh, um, happy I got a chance to go see them. And it was after like months of work, too. I just can't even imagine the countless hours that I go to. You know, all of those things. Um, so anyway, I wanted to talk a little bit about yonder, and I wanted to answer any questions, too, so I assume this can be a Oh, absolutely. A back and forth, so you guys can ask questions, and, um, I wanted to give you guys an update on some of the things that I've seen and some of the things that I've learned throughout this process. So, um, looking forward, uh, one of the things I did find out, now I didn't get a full quote, you know, moving forward for, for, like, we wanted to expand this to the whole, the whole school, seven through twelve, uh, but we are looking at roughly thirty dollars per pouches. The math on that, so roughly thirty dollars per pouch is what they're asking for. So that's what the, uh, the marketing person, you know, said to me when we spoke the other day, if we wanted to expand, or even if we didn't want to expand, even if we wanted to keep the seven and eight, we'd have to, you know, renew the lease in all those sense, so there would be additional costs to keep, to keep yonder. So that was one thing that I learned, is that that was a lease, not a purchase.
So the pouches are thirty dollars a year to lease them?
Uh, now, they're moving to a different model. That might be to own. So it might be thirty dollars to own. Um, but the one that we signed up for through the grant this past school year was a lease. And I think it was closer to something like twenty dollars a pouch or twenty-five dollars a pouch, I think.
So what happens to those pouches at the end of this year?
Um, if we, what they do is they collect them, they wash them, or send you new ones, and you renew your lease.
So if we choose to do nothing, then they're gone, because the grant that we got covered one year worth of lease?
That's my understanding.
So if we choose to continue at any level, there's going to be an expense to the district. It's just a matter of how much we want that expense to be.
Correct. So that's my understanding based on talking to the sales rep.
Why, why does it tend that way? Help me out here, if my memory's a little foggy. I believe the grant that we got was a ten thousand dollar grant.
It was.
Okay. So we have six hundred students at the entire high school, correct?
Six, six hundred and fifty.
Right, okay. We only did seventh and eighth grade. And even if it was twenty dollars a pouch.
Situation of the
Was that, so we had
So some of that cost covered, um, yes, it covered the magnets, but it also covered the support that they provided. So anybody that I spoke to, things like that, so having access to people that can support you, you're also paying for those things.
Okay. These representatives from yonder, would they be able to come to a meeting?
They would. Uh, so they have gone to many, they're welcome, they're, they're, they're more than willing to attend, uh, give you any information that you want to have. I'm still waiting for the exact quote from the sales rep that I spoke to. Yeah. But I do want to bring up a few things about yonder. I think that's worth discussing, some things that we can talk about. And I do want to answer some other questions just beside, uh, so I'll be honest with you, yonder does work. I'm coming from, uh, large districts, uh, the city of Chickity, where thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred high school students, nine through twelve, it was highly effective. Uh, it has been highly effective based on survey results, and it's been highly effective, uh, just based through observation, um, at the regional school. That being said, though, there's, you know, a lot of factors to consider when, you know, talking about yonder as the end-all, the- all, in my opinion. So, um, a couple of things that we did, so I just want to share a couple of points. Um, so before yonder, so before the implementation of yonder, uh, the survey results showed that seventy-five percent of teachers reported that they saw cell phones being used multiple times per day. So this is in grade seven and eight, so this is middle school where we now have yonder. We updated that number, it's actually been totally reversed. So the seventy-five percent in the first one, seventy-four percent are now saying that they either never or almost never see cell phones or any devices. Because the way that I phrase a survey question was devices. So this could be smartwatches, I don't have it, but, um, smartwatches, ear pods, you know, anything like that, um, they're seeing almost never, seventy-four percent. Sixteen percent say they might see something once a week. And there was one percent that says they still see some type of electronic device every day, but so that was middle school teachers alone. So it reversed the numbers. Uh, most teachers through our conversations are telling me they're seeing zero cell phones throughout the course of the day. So the program has, if that's what we're trying to achieve, we're trying to keep phones out of classrooms, lunchrooms, hallways, it has achieved its goal. So those are some of the, the data points that I wanted to share. The only place where it starts to get a little bit interesting is the other option that the high school has been implementing is the wall slots. So the wall slots offer something different, where students come in, they have cell phones on them, they take cell phones, they put them into the wall slots. Uh, so basically, it's like a hanging, you know, you could use shelves, or you could have something that hangs where there's literally like plastic slots you just large enough for a cellular device to go into. Um, so teachers, uh, from the high school level, twenty-five percent of teachers said they don't use that right now. It is not a mandate. So right now, our policy for high school is potentially teacher discretion. Students are supposed to have phones off and away unless they're being used for educational purposes, like there's like a thing called clickers where you can use it for, you know, formative assessment, you can hold it up, and you can get real-time information as a teacher, use it to adjust your instruction. Um, so if you're not using it for something like that, cell phone should be off and away. That is essentially our policy. So one thing I did gather from the survey from teachers is that they want a stricter policy for cell phones at the high school level. Something that is more uniform that everybody is doing, because it's hard when, you know, you're teacher A, and you're doing the wall slots, and teacher B is sort of wide open. So that's one of the things that, you know, is, is, uh, being experienced by the high school, the high school teachers. Um, so that's where it gets interesting. Almost a hundred percent of high school teachers want a stricter cellphone policy. But the survey results showed that about fifty percent want yonder, fifty percent of high school teachers want wall slots. So that is essentially what those survey results indicate.
So they So they've all got an option of using wall slots right now?
They can if they want.
And only twenty-five percent are using.
Are not using. I've never used them.
Oh, twenty-five percent are not. So seventy-five percent are using.
Or at least have used now. To what level of fidelity or consistency, you know, is it in the survey results? But they have used some form of a, a location in their room, you know, where students are being asked to put their cell phones.
And the feedback is really, even that's not necessarily successful, right?
So I, I can speak to that just based on personal experience. So, you know, when you have a rule that's not all a universal rule, and where you have certain teachers that are stricter about it than others, then what happens is, it's like parenting. You got two parents that come at the approach, you know, are, are not necessarily united with how they're, you know, disciplining. You end up undermining each other. And that's kind of what's, what happens in situations like that. So, you know, I, I think what China is saying is, we need something a little bit more universal. We need something that everybody's going to be expected to, to stick by. What that is, um, is up for debate, but the teachers that are trying the, but in the sense that I'm getting, teachers that are trying the wall slots, um, feel that it would be far more effective.
No, I mean, the teachers I've talked to, I, I've asked them whether they want yonder pouches, and I obviously got fifty percent that are absolutely, are you kidding me? If you can do that, we would love it. I know even from my own experience with my kids, we need to seriously consider going down this route, because I think the stuff we've been going through the last couple of weeks, the worst thing that we could do is leave social media available to these kids during the day. I think it's an absolute massive distraction. I don't think it allows these kids to learn. I don't think it allows the teachers to be able to teach. I frankly, I don't care what the cost is. I think we ought to seriously consider that. Um, the question I do have for you, though, Mr. Jacy, is the sixteen percent of the teachers that are saying that they saw this once a week, are they taking the units from the kids when they see it, and they're going away, and they go to the principal?
So, yeah, it, it usually goes to us.
Okay, I want to make sure they see it, and they're doing
So it'll be held. A lot of times, if it's the first offense, we'll call a parent, opposite attention. You know, that type of thing. Uh, oftentimes, we don't see repeat offenders. Couple of other things to consider, I guess. So, so one thing that we, we all agree on is that cell phones are an issue. And listen, I went through, because I was kind of trying to, I was definitely trying to prepare for this meeting, and, um, sure, I'm using the right words. And I was looking at, I found a couple of studies, and the National Institute of Health, they not only found that, like, you can't go on, you can't go through enough pages to find a, a pro cellphone in school study. It just doesn't exist. Nobody's out, nobody out there, regardless of your political affiliation, your social values, your, you know, I guess unless you work for Verizon, you're not saying, right, that cell phones have made society better. So I just happened to look, there were a couple that stood out to me. So the National Institute of Health ran a recent study where not only does, do we see lower academic achievement when cell phones are accessible? Now, this was at college level. So these are more developed brains, okay, than the brains that we're dealing with from anywhere from twelve to eighteen-ish. And so they saw not only lower academic achievement, but what was really concerning to me is increase in anxiety and mental health issues related to cell phone use. There was a direct correlation with students in college who had more access to cell phones and the mental health impact that it actually had on students with more developed brains. Um, the other thing is, I saw Harvard University study that was done recently. This is just kind of surprising to all of us. We're, we're mostly adults in here. Um, the Harvard study showed that US adults, so that's us, um, spend two to four hours. So our screen time is about two to four hours a day on our cell phones as adults with fully developed brains and more self-control and more resistance to things like dopamine addiction and things like that. Um, we touch our phones twenty-six hundred times a day on average. Um, so the last thing is, and, and, and this is something that you guys can, you know, do your research on, there's, there's Netflix documentaries on kinds of things on this, but, uh, the dopamine increase is intentional. So the, the cell phones are used with a reward system that is intended to make you addicted, to make your own dopamine levels, you know, increase when you use your cell phone through reward systems. So this was again in Harvard University, but these programs on our phones, even for adults, have mastered how to figure out our behaviors, play on our emotions, provide us sensory stimulus that we want, right? That feels good when we look at it, uh, provide pleasure and reward, and that again results in addiction, right? Because we want, we get those rewards. Uh, so that's even for adults. So for kids, you know, it's, it's tough. You know, we see, I see students in a hall, you know, they're walking around here. I mean, you're out in the hallway.
Yeah.
I know you're off camera, but you're out in the hallway, and how often do you see students kind of walking through the hallway just staring?
Sometimes.
Yeah, just staring, you know, from one place to the other. Maybe even in classroom, so you see them in classrooms?
It's a problem.
At the high school level, yes. But, so those are some of the things, you know, to consider, I guess, before, making any decisions on just presenting the facts.
So related to that, and related to the data that we've seen thus far, if our
Yes.
So, I mean, obviously, nobody is, is denying or discounting the, the psychological and the emotional impacts, that just having those things tied to us. Um, so you're, the data that you've recorded was simply about like how much teachers receive, right? What about the things that are related to anxiety and behaviors? Have we seen a change, and is there a way to measure that change amongst our middle players in, um, social media-related events? In generalized anxiety, um, and then generalized behavioral issues that may or may not be tied to cellphone use, social media use, and/or anxiety stemming from?
This is, um, so I have some data points. So I'm going to steal some data points from my old district, and I'm going to share some data points from Southwick Regional. So to answer some of your questions, so when asked about behavior changes, thirty-three percent of teachers in the middle school have reported an increase in negative behaviors since the implementation of yonder. So one of the things that I noticed in Chickity before I left is that, you know, there are many times where students will sit there and they'll almost be numb on their phones. They'll be quiet. You can walk into a classroom. In the classroom, they'll be quiet, but they'll all be on their cell phones. Now, when you take those cell phones away, I would say through my observation, and I'm just going to use my observation as a classroom teacher when I was in Chickity, I saw an uptick of behaviors as well. Chatty or students? So they were still chasing some dopamine, but through different means other than screens. So thirty-three percent of middle school teachers have actually said that they have seen, uh, an uptick. Forty-two percent have reported no change. So every, so classroom behaviors are exactly the same. So that's forty-two percent. So that's seventy-five percent that have seen either worse behaviors or the same behavior since cell phone. Cell phones have been restricted. Sixteen percent report that behaviors have improved. So I would say that that's in line with my experience as a classroom teacher from Chickity. I would say that that's very similar to what I saw. I saw an uptick in students having a harder time, like, they now use each other. So it was kind of cool to see them start to socialize with each other again. But now they're socializing with each other again, and so they're using each other for distraction. So I thought that was an interesting survey result.
Does that, I know we don't have data in our districts, because there hasn't been enough time.
Correct.
But is there data that then shows a stabilization or a turnaround after the initial, let's say, withdrawal event?
I, I would say so. I would say, I would say a lot of it felt normal in the way that, I, I mean, that's what most of my career was, was students, like, stop talking. Right? Like, that was, that was like
High school, that's what
Yes, that was sort of, sort of normal. Um, so, yeah, I would say that my classroom management adjusted to that. I would say the school's classroom management adjusted to that, and students adjusted to that as well after maybe that initial. I don't remember it being like, oh my God, I wish cell phones were back, like, you know.
I'm with you, though. Like, you would think second year, third year, fourth year, as even if you, as Ms. Carrier does, have all of her little stratified little reports, it'd be great to follow them from seventh grade to eighth grade, the ninth grade, to see, does that behavior continue to improve?
Yes.
As they go longer and longer without these cell phones and start figuring out how we live without them during school.
Or flip side? Are we just spinning our wheels and spending too much money? Because as soon as they leave our doors, they get on the phones, and they get them all night long, and, and, you know?
Chuck, do we still collect data when students go into the counseling suite? They log in and, and
Yeah, you have to log in for that, yeah.
And you give your reason why you're there?
Yes.
So that, and then we started that last year. So I think to your question is, looking at why students are going to the counseling office for support, whether it's over anxiety or, or social issues or, or peer conflicts or whatever, we might be able to compare last year with, at the middle school level, with cell phones compared to this year with, without cell phones, and, and maybe, uh, continue this and look at next year as well, year two without cell phones. That might provide you a little more of the data points that you're looking for.
So lastly, I'll say statistically, where I'm coming from at least, I'll remember they were in the twentieth-ish percentile. Uh, Southwick is much, much higher when it comes to standardized testing and, um, you know, the state level report card and reporting. So, uh, I will tell you that both standardized testing scores increased with the implementation of yonder, and, uh, attendance actually increased with the implementation of yonder. You can see that. So both of those items were increased, uh, data-wise, at least in that particular school district.
Do we ever keep track of kids that leave school early?
Here, we know, yeah, we know.
You know, like, it's not necessarily an absence, right? It's a certain early I would, I would be very interested to find out those numbers, because I'm going to bet you that those numbers go way down. Because if you've got somebody that's on social media or on Snapchat or whatever during the day, and something happens, and they now find out about it, and now they're all upset, and then they call mom. And then they call mom or they text mom and say, hey, I want out of here. I would have a tough time believing that those numbers didn't go down. With with the implementation of this, because if they don't know about. They don't know about it, it's not, I mean. Even where I work, I always. Right. I look, I always tell, I always tell the therapists at work. Enjoy your work. It's it's a, it's a. It is like a. Retreat from life's problems. They're gonna be there when you leave at the end of the day. The kids are the same way. Come to school, learn, use it as an oasis. The problems that you've got when you came in are gonna be there when you get home. Turn the phone back on and, okay, great, you can catch up with all your friends, but. It's good, it's, I don't know how they do it with all the distractions going on.
What else do you guys have for questions?
I I guess like what are our next steps, right? You know, I mean, we're. I guess I'm a little disheartened to hear that the grant that we had was just like kind of a one-time shot. Um, I. I guess I was under the impression that it was a little bit more longer lasting than that. Um, so you know, if we're looking at lease renewal versus purchase. Like what's our, and and it's very expensive. Uh, you know, what what are our options motivated? Do we just stick with seven and eighth grade or do we take that seven and eighth grade class, follow them up? Do we slowly add in one more grade level at a time? Um, what are our options? How would we finance it? Um, and. At being as physically responsible as possible, knowing that we. Don't have a ton of data. To support us other than the fact that we sense in our guts this must work. You know.
Well, I think, I think we have more, I think your questions are valid. I do think we have more than just our guts, though. Like I said, I saw a building of thirteen hundred. Students that it works.
Right.
Um, if for seventh and eighth grade, it works. Uh, that being said, uh, there are some, there are some difficulties with this. Uh, so first of all, if you spread it out through nine through twelve. You're going to, we're definitely going to need to ask lighting physicians. That check students in in the morning. Watch doors in the afternoon. It's going to be a much larger undertaking and have more volume of students. Uh, you know, using these, so we're going to need to have. Staff members who are dedicated to morning. Afternoon, it could be the same people, but. Uh, so that's one thing that we would have to consider. Uh, I would say that through implementation. Based on my observations. A straight shot if if it were zero dollars, if this were, you know. Finances weren't really a question, I would say doing an entire school is most effective. Uh, rather than a one-year at a time rollout. Just because. You know, everybody's on the same page and everybody's pulling in the same direction, which is really the the magic of Yonka. Right, they were, they were really intelligent in. Obviously, they're, they have no competition, so they patented this thing. They, nobody can touch it, nobody's competing with them. So the magic of it, though, is the consistency and that everybody's doing it. And that you can't pull your cell phone out. You can't like, there's no. You know what I mean? It's that consistency and that strict rule, that's the, that's the magic. Of Yonka. Um, so that's how I would roll that out. That being said, your options are. To keep it seven and eight. The way it is now. And then keep the policy the same. For nine through twelve. Um, your next option could be to. Keep Yonka seven through eight. Do the wall slots or some version of that for high school. Um, with a stronger policy attached to it. You could do wall slots for the entire school. With that. Stronger policy attached to it, uh or you could go yonder whole school. Those are my. Suggestions that I think.
But you know, if you try to follow them through, that would create a problem in high school. Then you get kids in one class that use Yonka, you get kids in class that don't use it.
Because you could have ten, twelve grades together.
Well, I mean, my vote immediately, no matter what the decision is with regarding Yonka is. A, you know, if it's not whole school, then absolutely no matter what, definitely stricter. Um, policy with regard to cell phone news in school, if they are allowed to have phone in school at all.
For sure.
Like, I mean, I think that's a clear no brainer. Um, I think that. Cost might dictate the rest of it, and so I think we need a a clearer breakdown.
I agree.
In terms of what that's going to look like.
I agree, a clear breakdown is, and I had hoped for it, I had given. I talked to them last week. I was supposed to have it on Friday, didn't put, oh, I sent another email this this morning. Didn't quite go through in time.
Even if it's thirty dollars a pouch, you're looking at eighteen thousand. Well, there's six hundred, right?
Um, how, if we purchase the pouches, what's the likelihood that we could reuse those stained pouches?
If if they truly are to own, then I I would see the the pouches lasting forever in a way. Unless a student loses or damages one, because then they would be responsible for paying for that themselves.
Right.
So it would be a one, should be a one-time purchase for each student conceivably as long as um. You know, if they break it or lose it, they are responsible for paying.
But could we take them back? Say we do them for the whole school and the seniors graduate, can we take theirs? And give them to the seventh grade, the following.
Depending on what type of shape they're in, yeah, I think you could do that.
So I think we just have to, I I I think it's just kind of a.
How, how are they holding up, right?
They're holding up okay. Some of them, I mean, the pins can be a little finicky, so the way that they work, I don't know. Anybody in here hold one before? Okay, so there is like a sharp pin inside and the pins can bend. So, so that's one thing, but they don't really rip, I will say that, there's not a ton of ripping.
So if we look at. Like what's the failure rate on lease sales? Is it ten percent, twenty percent, fifty percent?
Or the damage rate?
Well, I'm talking failure, like do you need to replace it?
You're asking, so this is a straight guess right now, this is just a state.
This is, I mean, from what you've seen.
Yeah, I would say.
Replacing ten percent of them because of failures?
Definitely less than ten.
Oh.
If I had, if I were a betting man, I would say somewhere in vicinity of five percent.
All right, so you're looking at a first year cost of twenty thousand. You're looking at a good consecutive cost of two thousand. Going further past that, you have somebody that has to help, will do this at the beginning of the day and the end of the day. I I I mean, to me, this is a no, I mean, we've got a.
And then we have continuity too.
We have a twenty million dollar budget, guys, and we've got teachers that are having tou- trouble teaching the kids, and we've got kids that can't seem to pay attention. To to invest. An upfront cost of twenty thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars for one year, and then it goes down to five. I mean. It's on, it is on new business and that's the reason, so we can continue this in a little bit.
We need to have some discussion of where we're finding.
Yeah.
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
No, no. Understood.
Get to where we're at right now. I, I support the endeavor, I think it's.
No, I know, but I mean.
Up there, I think it's a great idea.
It's one of those, it's one of those things we can make a, this, I mean, if we pull it from E and D or from school choice or whatever, then. We do it.
And we're thorough discussion with Yonka too.
Well, no, May the, May the seventh is our next meeting. I would like Yonka to be here.
Okay.
To try to explain, and if preemptively, they could get us the purchase options or whatever the financial options are, I would certainly appreciate that. Ahead of time.
Yep.
So that we can get that. Um, having them here at the next meeting on May the seventh and having a clearer idea what the cost would be. Um, if you want to work with Mr. Pramell to find out. What are we talking about cost-wise to figure out, help some open and close stuff at the end of the day? Um, we can certainly get that information on the May seventh meeting. And then we've got two more meetings in June, um that we can discuss. Being able to potentially do this for next year.
Can I suggest something as a student? So all of the math department, at least for the high school, we use um the pouches, which I honestly don't find.
She actually, the wall slots.
Yeah, yeah, the wall slots, sorry, we just call them pouches, but, or at least in high school you do, but those work. Really nicely. Also, other teachers have like boxes, just, and it. It's not every day that we're using the boxes or the slots in other classes, math department, you're putting it in every single day. You don't touch it until like ten minutes before class ends. Um. I feel like with the Yonka pouches, maybe. Financially also, you could save those for the students who are repeat offenders who are just using it constantly. Some people do keep them in their backpack instead of putting them in the pouch, but for the most part. The students really just follow those and they put them in the pouch when. They're compliant with it at this point.
So one of the things that the pouches don't do. Is, so they eliminate the class time. You know, so this is what we have to consider, I guess, as a team here, right? Because that's how I see this, we're all. Kind of figuring this out together and is. Is Yonka prevents the phones from being used at lunch. In the bathrooms. In the, you know, in the hallways, so things of that nature. So it stops phones from being used in in those areas as well, which is where. You know, from an admin side. Um, that's where s- a lot of the things, like when we've had people. You know, people don't always use their phones correctly, taking pictures, videos, et cetera. Um.
Those will be the students who would have the Yonka pouches. The majority of the students in my experience. Aren't doing inappropriate stuff like that. And I can tell you like a list of names, I have a list of names in my head right now. But it's mostly those students who also. Do inappropriate stuff in class with them. Those will be the ones who I feel like should have Yonka pouches. When other students, most of the students that I end in classrooms with, oh, they're compliant, we'll put them away. It's just a select few who misuse them.
That's my own children, that's, that's precisely their argument as well.
Yeah.
Ma, we use them appropriately during the day. Don't punish everybody, punish the ones who are the repeat offenders that have shown that they can't responsibly use it. Also, you know, they want or need the ability to be able to communicate with me when there's been a schedule change or a practice change and. Things like that, but we consider it a little punishment versus a typical. Exactly, so I I I don't know, I I've heard Magnolia's argument, I don't know, at my own dinner table, for sure. Um, I've heard that argument, but as a teacher. I do see the. Abs, the the fact that, you know what? It's easy to control what happens in your own classroom. If, once they walk outside the classroom. That, eh, during the the less structured areas, that the vast majority of issues occur.
And it's a new member, what is the policy?
So the current policy is, let's see if I can sum this up, I do have the whole thing, actually, word for word, right in front of me. Um, so the current policy in layman's terms is. Middle school students are not to have cell phones out at all, like, so they can't have them at any point during the day. They come in, they take their phone, they put it in the pouch. Stays locked up through the entire day. They don't get to use it at lunch, they don't get to use it in the classroom, hallway, restroom, et cetera, anywhere else. At the end of the day, they unlock their couch, they have access to their phone again, they can use it on the bus, walk home to school, those types of things. Uh, the high school. The cell phones are supposed to be off and away. In class. Except when the teacher is using it for educational purposes. So I could see. I'm trying to think of before we had Yonka, where I'm coming from, if I was a teacher, I could see like if I wrote notes on the board. And I was like, oh, shoot, we don't have enough time to have all you guys copy these down. Hurry up, take out your cell phones, take a quick snapshot, take a quick picture of the of the board. You know, I might use it for that reason, or like I said, there are apps. That students can use on their cell phones that can be used for formative assessments. It can be used as a positive tool. Um. So those are some of the things that you might. See, uh, or you should see. But what you might see when you walk throughout the school is students using cell phones for pleasure.
So we're at least allowed to use it in between classes.
They are.
Yeah.
In at lunchtime.
At lunchtime, always.
Had the result that your phones are always in, it's always attached to them, it's always in a hand. Usually during instructional time, if 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 the teacher abides by that. You know, policy, usually in instructional time, as everybody says, it is out that way, but there's a lot of. Not instructional time, then I think so the same.
I don't have much time to move the time, like, okay, turn them into our cell phones away and more like. Much of the time where the instruction I've worked hard for now, that they want to.
This would benefit. Maybe calming down lunch period, wouldn't it?
Hmm, not necessarily. They, no, believe it or not, they are lulled by that thing at lunch.
Sure, he said that.
No, it's like. Chatty.
I just wondered whether it would be a benefit at lunch and maybe.
Might make it work.
Um, yeah, you might want to make lunch twenty minutes long instead of a half hour.
A minute back, I experienced.
I'm just wondering whether, you know, I mean. From a revenue perspective or from a cost perspective. It might be helpful if it helps lunch.
There's a lot to consider. It looks like we have a little bit of time, so. You know.
Yeah, I mean, look, and and Mr. Tramel is is right, I mean, we we we've. We have looked at this budget six ways from Sunday now at this point. Um. If we don't, I mean, we may be at a point where. We certainly got some things opening up next year from a budget perspective that we don't have in place this year. It may be something, now, the only challenge, I'm I'm with Pam, the only challenge that is frustrating. Is that. We certainly were not presented. At the beginning of the year or last year, when we were talking about Yonka pouches, where this was a one-year sort of lease type of setup. Um, because, so now the question is. If we. We might have to maybe do a year of the slots and make it a. Forced sort of change the policy, see how it goes. And if it doesn't go well, we'll have the finances and the ability to do this the following year and just spread it out through the entire. School, the question of concern is, what do we do with the seventh and eighth graders for next year?
Right, and is there a medium? You know, like, is that thirty dollars per purchase? And can we do an extended one-year lease? Can we?
Sure.
Can, you know, can we get some good graces from from Yonka? Or is is there some of that grant that hasn't been used up?
I think looking at the grant, I don't want the the. The finances to be the barrier, because I just think that if it's something that we want to do at twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars. We need to look at the budget and maybe.
We need to figure out.
We need to figure out what, where is it going and what is.
I mean, the, the only options we really have is, is there a revolving account that we can pull that? Because it's certainly not in the budget from a line item perspective anywhere.
Yeah.
So if one of the revolving accounts is healthy enough that we can do this. Then it's an option. If it's not, then it's not.
So I have reached out to Department of Education. I'll I'll leave you guys with this, because I don't want to take up. Hold on, but uh. You know, I did reach out to Department of Education and waiting for answers. Um, but I did ask a couple of questions, so I asked, and neither one has been answered. But I asked, uh, is the Department of Education going to implement any sort of policies? That are like that we have to abide by to account for. You know, reducing or controlling cell phone use in classrooms. Is a state going to? You know, make a mandate where schools are now expected to do something like that? That's part of what you do now as a district. Uh, so I don't know the answer to that question, short term or long term. The other thing is I did ask. If they're going to have more grants available like they did last year. Uh, so that's one thing we don't know, that's completely up in the air, is that something that they're willing to help schools fund for another year? Or not, uh, when it comes to the. You know, controlling cell phones. So I don't have an answer to either question yet. And uh, hopefully by May seventh, I can get that for you.
When did the first grant, when did the grant that we got this year, when did that open up or when was it?
I know we applied for that in the summertime, so, you know, that was. You know, after the school year had ended. So I think that was, you know, FY.
We're really, what, four months into this?
Five months, yeah, October, yeah, or sorry, November, no, we started.
Did you say before, after Thanksgiving, right, that we did it?
We started it before Thanksgiving. I think it was, if I remember correctly, it was a day after Veterans Day.
Okay.
That we started. But it was right around there.
Well, thank you very much. That was very, very good and helpful iteration.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, good night, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We don't have it on here. But Mrs. Carrier, did you happen to get any, I I know, last meeting, we, you sang the praises of this assessment system.
Oh, I don't have the numbers yet, but they are actually looking, well.
Oh.
I was, so I'm I'm cautiously optimistic that.
You think maybe on May the seventh, you might have some updated info that you can talk to us about? Here, can you please put her on the agenda for the seventh? Thank you, I didn't mean to.
No.
Call on you, but it wasn't on here, so I didn't want to forget. All right, Superintendent Willard.
Um, so we had a little briefing earlier about the Attorney General's addressing hate. Um, in sports training. Um, I know Principal Shorter spoke spoke to Northeastern today. About it, and what we are looking to do. Um, is to approve a nine-thousand-dollar grant later on in our meeting that we received to help fund these uh. Presentations in small groups uh at our school. What we would like to do when we were speaking with Northeastern today is to really look at doing. This year, whole school presentations. This year, whole school presentations. So we would do seventh and ninth grade together. And then tenth and eleventh grade together. And then we would do um eighth grade by itself. And they would just come in for one day. And you know my feeling on one day presentation, but not a really big fan of that. So Principal Shorter is going to be reaching out and um Northeastern is going to be reaching out to the Attorney General's office. Because what we'd like to do is do the whole school presentations uh at the end of this school year. And then do some small groups uh at the beginning of next school year. So everybody would get an overview and a training on this. And then next year we would break out into smaller groups. So she's calling the Attorney General's office to see if that would be doable, because that's what's really in the best interest of our district is. Really presenting it to everybody and then having those wrap around small groups. Uh, we were supposed to have uh training on active bystanders this morning. Um, due to a family emergency, they had to reschedule for rescheduling in June. Um, Magnolia did speak to this SRS Student Staff Committee uh update. Um, just really excited because I was ready to just jump and roll out with anonymous alerts. Um, and uh violating my own policy if you go slow to go fast. And so the kids really talked me off the ledge and just running with it and just getting it out there fast and get it out there. Um, and that would be to me like just checking the box. We got it out there. They're like, well, let's make it so that it's. What works for us in Southwick and not just what everybody else does. So we're slowing the roll on that. And when we need to get on May sixth, the homework for the team is to go look at other school districts, um anonymous alerts. And then come back and let's put one together that would work for our school district. Um, we do have the outreach program on four twenty three. And we are beginning our needs assessment with William James College. Uh, they will be coming out to speak with our admin team first on May second. And from there we will get some further dates for the student focus group um that you were talking about at our meeting. Um, parent focus groups, staff focus groups, and potentially some community focus groups. So that is, hopefully they'd like to set all those up between now and the end of the school year. Um, to work on the needs assessment over the summer so that we have an action plan um for the beginning of next school year.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Of the four twenty three presentation. How's that gonna work?
So that's an evening presentation. And that Magnolia can probably speak more to that than I can.
Yeah, so this is the presentation that the Hampton District Attorney often does. Um, you can check their social media. They have photos from that. They do bring in we. As a part that we have to complete certain amount of volunteer hours, which this basically is. Um, it'll be a presentation, basically just educating the parents on different social media apps, how their kids are. Acting on them, um, the purpose of the different apps, how they function, what the concerns are. Um, what they look like also. And they will also hit that pamphlet that I spoke about earlier, which was. Once again, created by students and is revised, um. There will also be if we miss anything. I think myself and the other students will make sure that it's covered. Um, but yeah, all parents are welcome.
Can we get this out to people other than parents, like students? Be um, community, I'm talking community members, I'm talking people. That don't necessarily have students in our schools. But I do, I mean, i- i- it's just. I I think that if it's, if the target audience is the adult population, right? Um, I think the older the adult population gets, the less they know about these social media apps. Um, and I think that it's valid information that everybody should know. I mean, I think if we can. Really do a a PR push like with the library, um, of all three towns. Um, there's a little bit more networking.
I also wanna say that these pamphlets that you get, they like to distribute them to schools. So we can put those in all the schools, the town hall, the library. That just has to be communicated with the district attorney's office. They print them like these, these are specially printed, like they put all that together, but I'm sure they'd be fine with that.
Yeah, we need to get the parent, we need to make sure of the parents from the elementary school, the middle, like everybody.
We can handle that. Uh, Russ, what are you, how do we get on the um marquee right in front of Berkshire Bay?
Just talk to Ken. You can have it used to that anytime. And he also puts it on the town website.
Okay.
Get exposed in there.
I said, well, so I get state connected through Woodland and then Powderdell, something else like. So I'm like, I know I read it in one of them.
Principal driving that I did two weeks ago and it'll go in tomorrow.
Right, yeah, right.
There's parents, there's also student um presentations. I did one at Powderdell and I also did one at Woodland. They also, I think we're planning one probably next year, something. They have one for seventh grade, eighth grade. Um, it's difficult because we're the sixth grade down here and seventh, eights up there, so that would happen to something that we figure out. Then also probably something for high school and just also for students and then parents that will be annually as well. What time is no getting ordered? Uh, six o'clock. Yes.
Yeah, there's only one problem with with what you're discussing here is how do you get it up the hill? You know, this all this information and everything else. No.
Well, I think what we, we, well, what we have, what we have set up Ted. Is that any sort of, and this is recent, that that came up during this last little issue. That we've now included any notification to go out from the school, go to the to the towns and the select. Persons of both towns. So it gets to Granville and to Tolland. So that they know about it. Obviously, the parents of the kids that go to school get it. But we're sending it up to the towns and the three select persons from each town are notified of this going forward.
And I think that our select board members should be encouraged. To disseminate that information within their towns as they best see fit, whether it's, you know. Flyers in the town halls, things like that.
But we don't have that type of.
Okay, okay. Well, I guess if that's the case, how would we be able to solve that then?
What are your suggestions?
Well, tonight I didn't have to work at.
No, 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 no. Okay, but I mean, that that's a good question. I mean, I guess that maybe that would be something to bring to the town. Look, if we can get a list of emails, we can just add them to a distribution list.
You have a town hall, you have a bulletin board, correct?
No, we not.
Oh.
I mean, we have, yeah, we have a town hall and we do have a bulletin board, but it's both, I would say. Probably close to eighty percent of the of the people in town don't don't go there and read it. There there is no. Do you have a town website? It's not, we have it, but I would.
How about a cold cold bread? Do you have that?
No.
How do you let people in Tolland know if something, if something important is going on?
I would really get it in weeks out and.
Phone call with like a road.
We don't have.
Reverse nine one one or anything like that?
No, we have, we have those, we have that available.
Well, we can certainly put it on the the Randall Town Community Forum.
Yeah, but we don't.
On Facebook.
They don't read it? Okay, Ted, I.
This is bigger than.
Well, no, no, I know, but this committee is not gonna be able to solve that problem.
Well, if if you don't solve it.
Well, I tell you, but this committee can't solve that problem. That that's gonna be something that Tolland is gonna have to work. We can certainly work with them. To try to solve it, but we can't come up with the solutions for the town.
So Erin, just a request from the uh smaller towns to make sure that uh. The informational flyer about the um presentation on the twentieth go out to all of our stakeholders.
Like meetings for town, like the town meetings.
No, I know. No, I mean, look, it's a good question. I don't, I mean, if we can come up with options, that's great. I mean, but.
Media.
Right. Yep. Yeah, I mean, we should be, I mean, that that would be stuff that, you know what, we should be moving to Cliff with at the Westfield games anyway. All this stuff that we're doing, we should be sending to him so he can get it out there.
Well, I said, I've been saying it for a couple of.
No, I know, absolutely.
I would have loved to have half the things that Magnolia talked about.
Yeah.
Out there.
It's true.
You know, we're getting all this bad press.
Yep.
Yeah, we have so many great things that are going on.
Well, I do wanna clarify. I know there's like no one here, but these aren't to. These aren't to like cover our butts, like people ask for change and this is change. So.
So you, you know what, what might be a good? Option. You've got this all typed out. You've got it all printed up on your phone. We can certainly get you Cliff's email address. Before you guys.
See the Western news really next to police department?
I don't know, uh, no. But I mean, you can, you can get that and send that to Cliff.
Okay.
Every time you guys come in to do a presentation, every meeting, you've got it ready usually the day before, send it to him. And that way he's got the information, he can put it out there.
He's going to.
Absolutely. He's probably listening right now. He normally tells. So shout out to Cliff at the Westfield News right now. He's probably listening anyway. Or he'll listen at some point.
Do you guys have mail? Saying like, if if these are planned in advance, we can send out paper. I like mailing that. I'm trying to figure out some sort of communication.
Ted, I I don't have the bench. It smokes here.
So Jeb, before we move on, I do have a question for you. I got a question for you. Your violence in sports that were, is is that. Is that the the one that we're gonna do the two, the two classes and then we're gonna do, you don't wanna do it? All at once and you're gonna do some follow-ups in the in the following?
There's not enough time to do it.
Understood.
Yeah.
My question is.
We just have to make sure that the grant will pay for that.
Right. Would you wanna consider including the sixth graders? In that first session at the end of this year? Because they're gonna be in the seventh grade at the beginning of next year when you wanna do small class or small groups. And they're not gonna receive the first informational session at the end of this year.
So that's interesting. I'm gonna have to talk to Principal Shorter because we strategically set it up a certain way.
No, no, I understand that, but if you're gonna do these small groups, these guys are gonna be there. It fall, it may be worth. Get created, it's at the end of the year. It's at the end of the year like everywhere else. They're, they don't watch a movie that day. They're going up to go listen to this.
I'll let Principal Shorter know.
Um, other question I have, that May second thing where William James College is coming to talk to you again.
Yeah.
Uh, school community members, if available, could they come to that?
Not that one. That one's strictly at our admin meeting. You will be having one with her.
Okay, sounds good.
And then Jen, um, the Training Active Bystanders that was uh supposed to occur today. What what was that in reference to? Active bystanders with regard to.
Oh, bullying, okay, okay. Because we're finding, um, we have a lot of bystanders who, which is where anonymous alerts came in. We don't know how to report.
Right.
Um, but uh Powderdell has seen an uptick in what they call upstanders. Um, where people are now reporting. Um, so just by talking about it, we generated and commending the kids are coming forward. We've seen an uptick in the number of kids who are no longer bystanders, but upstanding and doing what they're supposed to do. Um, so, but we need, we, I'd like to just, it was just an overview of the training. It wasn't something that we signed a contract with because there's multiple out there, but um. Yeah, if you don't feel the emergency, she canceled.
All right. Everybody else got any questions?
Do I have an answer to the question?
Ted, I don't think we're gonna be able to answer your question tonight. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know how this committee is gonna solve a communication problem. To get information out of the residents of Tolland if the town itself hasn't been able to solve this up to this point. I don't, I don't know. I can't.
Whether it's in summer.
I don't know. I'm always leaning towards. Bugs and smokes in the lock. I mean, I don't know. Magnolia, it may be something where. We can send the stuff up to the town and the town can bail something up to each and every individual resident. That that's an option.
The issue is that is that we just have to make sure it's planned in advance. I don't know how postal stuff works. I'm not an expert on.
I just don't know. I don't know how we can solve that. We can certainly think about it. We.
But that's probably, that that will always remain an issue.
Understood.
We're going to do a town. I mean, that, you know.
But we also record this and keep it like on the district website so that.
We don't have, really have, how many students are going to.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but here's the thing. I did hear you tell us multiple times now that Tolland has high-speed internet. And this is recorded on YouTube, each and every meeting. So the options there for them to watch this do. It it, there are options there.
And that's the other problem. The only people that go to this.
Yep.
You don't have kids. The majority of Tolland, we don't have any kids.
And they don't need to go to this DA's thing on social media about kids on.
Right.
They wouldn't wanna go to it. It wouldn't be relevant for them.
I don't know.
See, that's, that's the issue.
Yeah.
You've got old people. Which the biggest population that won't even get on computers. And then you've got, you know, you've got kids, you know, then then you've got the younger.
Well.
And they're they're a minority.
How about we do this? We will, we will.
There's a communication problem.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach, I'm gonna have Erin send an email from me.
Right.
I'll reach out to the selectmen of Tolland myself, indicate that this came up in the meeting tonight. And we would be interested in helping in any way we can to help improve the communication in the town if they could. And that way I'll kind of put it in their laps and they'll get back to us.
Because we'd like the community to be a better community beyond those of school age parents.
Yeah, we don't have that many children.
But even if you have kids who go to Farmington River or to another district, their parents are still able to come and attend.
Yeah. All right.
They go through that alert.
Mr. Trammell. These lovely blue binders that we.
Yeah, so uh, we have received our FY twenty three end of the year report. It has been. We have gone through our audit. It has been submitted to uh the state as well. So we have met all our requirements. For the district end of the year report. Uh, so what we have is a report on the examination of our basically financial statements, which is really just is taking. Um, really all of our, our numbers, all of our grants, all of our employee benefit retirements and and looking at that. And then it's looking, the second binder is our grants and the last binder, which is. Which is, I'm going to say the most important because it gives us our summary of the management letter. Um. Gives us their findings. There were no findings that were are any concern. We are a low-risk. Uh, district, which is good news for us. Um, to to summarize, all three folders for you is. Um, no material weaknesses, no significant proficiency and no instances of non-compliance were found. Uh, we have two areas that we we need to uh look at and and this has been a recommendation from. Uh, Powers and Sullivan for a few years now, and I think we actually are in position to to tackle this FY twenty five. One is we need without a cash investment policy, not have a bad investment policy. I know that had been in place for a number of years, so we will, we will look at that one. The second area of improvement is assessing and improving our cybersecurity around our financials. We have already taken, we've already taken, addressed some of it, forced some of it with a positive pay that would work with our our banks. Uh, but where I'm confident about this as well is is SRL Sanders has already put in place. A school security assessment uh for the district. It came up at one of our safety meetings. Uh, he's actually walking around SRS tomorrow to begin that. But there's a cybersecurity division uh that's part of the school assessment. Um. School security assessment. And Garland Green has met with with uh John Warren. Is that his name? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
John Warren, uh, looked at what we have set up, looked at at some of our infrastructure already. And they are going to be coming in and doing a cybersecurity assessment for us in the near future. Uh, and that will give us a report, that will give us. Uh, areas that we need to improve on, some areas of screening, and that immediately going to help us uh. Identify this moving forward, the third area, which he didn't highlight, that that I was I was updating Superintendent Muller down this morning. Uh, when we receive a grant, we receive it as a district and we put it into our budget as a district grant, what they are looking for. Is, one of their recommendations is that it is more identified to a specific school. How much of the money is going, how much is going to SRS? I don't know the reason behind that yet, we it, so we weren't cited on it, it wasn't a recommendation, but it is something that I. They talked to me about in this in this process, so I wanna learn a little bit more about that as to why that is important.
Well, it's gotta be some sort of justification there.
I'm sure there is, and it might just be a matter of. It's just easier for them to see where the money is going into to what pool, um. But overall, we got a very, very good report, um, again, and a lot of it. Needs to be, a lot of this is due to Jess Cody and Lisa Busque and. Uh, Betsy Pedro, who are in the office that have just done really human work in. In getting us to a a place in FY twenty three last summer, uh, that we got a favorable report again from our auditors. Powers and Sullivan, who have been our auditors for maybe fifteen years, have been bought out by by Marco. But they are, uh, uh, much of Powers and Sullivan's are staying with with Marco and Mr. Gray, uh. That has been going on, maybe that transition maybe has happened for the last three or four months, uh, so this is the last month we've received Powers and Sullivan. The next year will be be Marco, but, uh. Uh, I've been sure that people that have worked with us over the years, our consultants would be still with us.
Marco's a good company, they do, they, yeah, long term care where I'm where I live.
Yeah.
They do a lot of the audits for those for those facilities, they're very well respected.
This transition has been seamless with them and they've provided us with, they've just been wonderful, so, um.
So Joe, just to, I I I I absolutely love the kudos that you're giving to your team, but let's. Make sure that we don't forget, I mean, this was one of Steve Presnell's shiny moments to get this report to have like zero. Like when we asked him, like, this is an A plus or an A, they're like, absolutely. Um, to get this report and to go through this transition and for this to be your first audit that you are completely responsible for. I I wanna thank you. Um, this doesn't go unnoticed. Um, it is certainly your oversight and your team, but you know what, if it wasn't a good report. The blame was gonna get placed on you, but when it is a good report, the accolades also get. Thrown your way as well, so congratulations, I am very, very pleased with it.
Well, I appreciate it, but it is, it is a.
Oh, absolutely.
Effort to get this done and. A lot of people picked up a lot of extra work and responsibilities to. Put everything together to to, uh, work with the auditors and and the auditors were very. Patient and understanding.
You didn't drop the baton.
No.
We still got it done and we kept, we kept our 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 A plus rating from the auditors, so congratulations. That's great.
Yes, um.
You got anything else for us?
One more thing, uh, Mister George, Athletic Director George. Uh, has come to me requesting, uh, a new high jump mat. Um, I don't know the last time that we purchased one, it's been here ten years.
Before that.
Um, so we can get through, we can get through the spring season with it, it's not, it's not, um. Kids will still be able to do the high jump and 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 participate and and we can still host track meets, uh, but we have. Uh, in two thousand eighteen in our FFNE capital account, it's, you know, thirteen thousand left over in that specific account. Uh, we received one, two, three, four. Uh, eight quotes for, uh, different sizes, different lifts, different depths, the heights, uh. And Richie Athletics, their quote was the best and also including. Uh, the crossbar, the elastic crossbar, the tote bag storage bag and shipping setup. For nine thousand three hundred and five dollars, so I'm requesting approval from the school committee. To use, uh, two thousand eighteen FFNE. That has twelve thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars remaining, to use nine thousand three hundred and five dollars of that. To purchase a high jump mat for our outdoor event.
Is that Matt, I I, you said you got different specs.
Yes.
Is that Matt at least the size that the kids are currently jumping on?
It it needs the requirements, um, I'm not sure of the size of the one that we have.
Just curious how it compares to what they're jumping on now.
Yeah, uh, good question, uh, I can tell you that. They're all of. Something by eleven by eleven by twenty eights, they they range from nineteen eighteen sixteen. Uh, I don't know what ours is currently right now, I can find out that that quarter.
And I just, you know, wanna make sure that it is approved by the coach before.
The coaches have looked at this, the coaches have made a recommendation. Uh, Mister George, yeah, Mister George has done his his research to make sure it meets. The, uh, the specifications for safety and for hosting the events, um.
So if we verify, so just so everybody knows, we've got, if if Mister Turmell has gone back and looked at. Capital purchases or capital expenditures that we've been allocated over the last number of years. And by doing our due diligence, there are is money left over from some of those capital purchases. Legally, if that is past a five year timeframe, or if it's in the fifth year timeframe. Any unused amounts that are left over that the. The project was completed.
That's if we wanted to combine. So this FFNE just falls under FFNE.
Okay, stands for what, FFNE?
So what you asked me to look look at is 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 Mister Presnell has a spreadsheet I go back to, I think it was two thousand fourteen.
Yeah.
To to present. Um, and some of the projects have been completed, that have, some have, um. Uh, money still in there of ten thousand to twelve thousand to a thousand dollars and whatever, and so with the added at our finance subcommittee. The question with that, can we pay the the money that hasn't been spent yet and put it into a. A, um, combined.
Like a revolving capital account that that we can grab stuff from that needs it, so we don't have to go for a capital. Request to the towns, we've already got money that they've approved, allocated, has been in budgets for the last four or five years, it's just not been spent. Um, do we actually need a vote on this? Which, um, cause the money's.
Allocated to FFNE, probably not, but to bring to your attention that is.
No, I mean.
But in order, yeah, to to finish that that sentiment, in order for for the committee to go on and improve. Taking past capital funds, uh, and and create this revolving capital accounts, two things need to happen. It needs, the bond needs to be paid off. And that happens after five years, and the project that that was voted on. So if we did a paving project in in twenty eighteen and there was two thousand dollars allocated for that and it cost us a hundred fifty thousand dollars. That extra fifty thousand dollars in order to to do something completely different with that.
Would be differently that what then happens to, does it go back to the member towns?
Doesn't go back.
No, it just can't get reallocated unless it's done. So it kinda gets caught in the mouth, but this would be one that we're using from funds that have already met two requirements, allowing us to use it for a different project, correct?
I mean, this falls under, to me, this falls under FFNE anyways, I'm just saying. Just letting you know that there's twelve thousand dollars left in FFNE in twenty eighteen, I would like to use nine thousand of that for the mat.
I mean, does anybody have an issue with this? Let's tentatively approve it, let's just make sure we don't actually need an official vote, if we need an official vote. We can add it as an action item on the May third, on the May seventh meeting, that still gives us enough time to prove it, purchase it and get it onsite. Before the beginning of the year, right?
Okay.
Okay. Anybody got any objections to that? Alright, fantastic. Alright, policies, none, our policy meeting got canceled today, um. Our consultant was not feeling well, so we hope she feels better and we'll looking to do it at our next. Well, in May, right, twentieth, something like that. Um, Superintendent Lillard, we got some action items tonight.
Well, move to approve consent agenda items as listed above, recommended.
Alright, uh, all in favor of the consent agenda? Erin, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the formation of the advisory committee to the school committee, recommended.
Any questions on this?
Yeah, so is this in addition to the listening sessions? That Williams James College is going to be setting up with different groups?
Well, yes, this would be, this would be some, this would be a special advisory committee to the school committee.
Right, as we discussed.
Right, so we want it, we we have to take a vote on this to approve it. I am certainly looking to have. Students, community members. Couple of school committee members, some teachers, we gotta talk to the superintendent about being able to do that. Um, I wanna, as we've discussed over the last couple of weeks. This meeting is not a meeting meant or set up for a discussion. Those listening sessions are certainly a great place to do that, this is what I envision this special. Subcommittee being is getting the stakeholders in a room. Listening, talking, being able to report to us on whatever frequency basis that we wanna do. To bring back recommendations for us as a committee to consider, um, to help move the needle and get. Move us in the right direction, trying to get these kids to be able to respect each other in the school. That's 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 what I look at this committee as being able to help us do.
Yeah.
Well, we, it's it's. The plan would be. First, we need to figure out, first, we need to approve it so that we can, we can, we can set it up. Then the next question's gonna be, who do we want on it, or like what groups do we want on it? And we need to try to figure out how to pick those people. So it's it's. No, I know, I, well, I've already left.
I don't know that we wanna be picking or soliciting volunteers.
Well, it it's, if there's, I've already spoken to one community member that emailed specifically out to me. That indicated he would like to be of assistance in any way possible.
Can I have someone as well?
That's somebody that's already reached out. Um. I spoke with Asher the other day and he was here, after he spoke. He certainly has a voice that I think could be of assistance. There are going to be some kids at the school that I think would wanna help out with this. Maybe one that's sitting next to me, I don't know, I haven't even talked to her about this yet, but I mean, there, I think there are people out there that wanna help. This would be an opportunity for us to be able to do something on our end. Like we said, look, this is not gonna get solved with just us. The community needs to get involved, the district needs to get involved, the parents need to get involved, this is a. Vessel that we can get everybody that are that are part of that involved to be able to give us as a committee. Some feedback, some recommendations. Do we have it all planned out yet? No, this is the first step, we can't move forward without this.
And you don't want it all planned out.
No.
Cause you wanna get the input from all of your stakeholders.
Yeah, we can take this step by step. Alright, so can I get a motion to approve this, or no, we've already done that, can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Erin, let the, all in favor? Any opposed? Uh, Erin, let the record show the motion passes five zero one. Um.
Okay, move to approve the Southwick Town and Bramble Regionals School District's participation in the Metco program for the twenty four twenty five school year, recommended.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I know the medical program has been around for a long, long time, from sixty thousand. Uh, is it a set number of students?
We have about twenty, if there were a little bit less, is there a set number? No.
No, but have we seen a decline or an increase or?
We did see a decline post COVID.
Post COVID.
And these are all kids that choose to come here, correct?
Yes, part of the backdoor program, so I know Eastland Meadow is, I know Long Meadow is, I know we are. I've known Hamdul Wilberham is or were, um, I think. That's it for the, there's not many participating school districts in Western Mac, it's really big out by Boston.
Yeah.
But it's not as big, um. In Western.
And I'm assuming the the vast majority of these kids are from Springfield, Holyoke?
Only Springfield.
Okay.
What does Metco stand for?
I couldn't tell you, yeah. Massachusetts Education.
Don't even attempt it, I don't know. Alright, uh, show of hands to approve the motion. Erin, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero.
Uh, move to approve the following school choice seats at each grade level for the twenty four twenty five academic year. I'm gonna do an explanation after I'm done, kindergarten zero, one, zero, two, zero, grade three, five, grade four, five, grade five, zero. Grade six, five, grade seven, five, grade eight, five, grade nine, five, grade ten, five, grade eleven, five. Grade twelve, zero, for a total of forty. I don't ever do kindergarten right now because we do not know how these students. Were going to get to register for kindergarten, like last year we were in the seventies and the year before that we were at a hundred. And we had to add an extra kindergarten teacher, so I know we have, we have kindergarten applications and don't want people to panic. Um, at the last school committee meeting of the school year, um, I'll have a better number. And I will potentially opening seats in kindergarten for next year, first grade, um, and second grade is a definite no. First grade, maybe, I'm gonna look at those numbers again, but I will bring an update to you in the last school committee meeting here.
We should finally agree to do this quarterly to address these issues. Russ, you look like you have a question.
Are these new openings, Jen?
Yes.
Okay, so how many students in total are coming out, uh?
Can I just point a pointer, one one quick second, can I get a motion on this?
Yeah, so, sorry.
Okay, good, now we can finish our discussion.
We have about a hundred and forty school choice students right now.
And is that number going up or down? But we still have many more students coming into the district through school choice than we have going out of the district, correct?
Yes, the caveat is we have a lot more now going to Westfield Technical Academy in Smith. So it's making it look like it's their school choice, even though they're not school choice, but technically.
But from a school, school choice is a child requesting to go to a different school district.
Right.
That lives here, it's not that they're going to out of district vocational. They're going out to a different school, correct? Alright, and we still have many more kids coming into Southwick than going out.
Yeah, it was three to one, it's about two point five to three to one.
Okay. It's my, cause I know I've seen things, other places that have indicated that we've got less kids coming here from school choice than we've got. More going.
No, no, that's absolutely not true.
Alright. Anybody have any questions on this? And the reason we have nobody in twelve, Superintendent?
Um, because we take it as a case by case basis.
Okay.
Because, um, you usually do not accept twelve graders because they'd be getting a diploma and they really haven't been here.
Okay.
Um, but if we have a student who's been here with us and they wanna stay for their senior year. Um, we would open up a seat for them. However, if we've had other kids apply for twelve grade, which you usually don't unless they've been here.
Right.
Um.
Cause any other student that's already here in eleventh grade under a school choice seat has already got that seat.
Yes. Once you're in, you're in.
Right. Okay, can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Erin, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero.
Move to accept the Attorney General's Office Local School Training Grant addressing hate in school sports. And approving expenditures as outlined in the terms of that grant, recommended.
So, second.
Any questions on this? Can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Erin, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero. Alright, super, subcommittees negotiations. We've got two active going on right now that are getting close to the finish line, hopefully we'll get some. Information on that soon, right? I I am the eternal alchemist, uh, finance. Our job is done at this point, it's in the hands of the voters. Um, so we'll have, uh, town meetings coming up over the next couple of months to approve or deny the budgets. or deny the budgets, um, just so that everybody's aware, we did do another adjustment on the, um, budget that's gone to the towns, we ended up bringing down the overall assessment total by two hundred and twenty.
Two fifty-five.
Yeah, two fifty-five, and then we removed the other capital project that was on the books, so from where we were at our last meeting, we were at three hundred thousand dollars below that. Um, so hopefully that will give us enough to get over the edge, and we'll get these approved. Um, Erica, you got anything from the collaborative?
No, we haven't had a forum the last two meetings.
Yeah, I haven't had anything, so we only have a quarter, so I don't know when. Uh, policy, we just updated everybody on. You alright?
We're good.
You got flying phones now? You had a yonder pouch at which know you. That's it, we're gonna grab the yonder pouches for the school committee members and the school representative at the meetings on the boards, that's only gonna be three, six, nine, ten, three hundred dollars, I think we can figure that out, so you're gonna enter and put it in next time you come. Alright, uh, building to grounds.
Four mornings.
Four.
Four mornings. What time the work morning, I don't know why this is not on my.
Ten thirty, I believe.
Okay, I'm gonna have to call in or something.
Call you?
Yeah.
Ten thirty, ten thirty.
Okay, I'm not tired, I have got a meeting at ten thirty, so I am gonna have to miss it, I apologize.
I love did you.
Um, I O T.
Yes, we had a meeting last week, um, and, uh, two different presentations. Uh, the first one was, um, Rebecca Crawford and Molly Murray, um, are our school adjustment counselors at Woodland. Um, and they presented and explained, um, the process um, for SATs due assistance, assistance team referrals. Um, and it, it, it basically what this is, is when a kiddo is identified as struggling, um, whether it be academically, socially, or in any other way, um, there's a, a process where with they, um, are, are referred basically for a second, um, in terms of what are we doing, how can we best help them. Um, and the street systems team, it happens way, way before you begin, um, the Bible core or the IP referral process. Uh, and, and this is basically working with teachers and, um, other staff members on tier one supports that can be put into place, um, that are sort of universal good practices, um, just to kind of get the kids, uh, they're young, they're little guys, um, this may be their first experience in school, um, just learning strategies and coping mechanisms, um, to, with the, with the goal of hopefully avoiding later on referrals by a more than eight. Uh, so it, it, it was a, in a good presentation, interesting, um, and, and has been highly effective, and, um, I, I guess a little bit more standardized, I would say, um, in recent years in both Woodland and. Um, the second presentation, um, was, um, two teachers, uh, Noel Decat and Aslan Jigir, um, all from Woodland, one in kindergarten and one first grade teacher. Um, and they, um, are, I mean, it's been looking at the Woodland progress report. Uh, and what they, um, this committee and, and the teachers at Woodland, um, really want to do is switch to, um, pro- progress reporting report cards on a trimester basis rather than quarterly. Um, that we, we used to do it that way, um, for some reason that I don't quite remember, we switched back to being quarterly. Um, and for the youngest kids, um, and for their teachers, it just doesn't work quite as well. Um, they're, they get a lot of ends on their report card, um, which yeah.
Needs improvement.
And I think what, and no, it's, it's, it hasn't even, that's, yeah, hasn't been taught yet.
Um, cause I say PR's progressing, there's met, and there's a speed that I can't.
Not yet assessed, not, and there's just too many not yet assessed, especially in the first quarter.
Cause all that talks report, it has like everything they should know in the year, so you get a lot of ends in the beginning, so they just haven't hit that topic. Exactly, they just start.
Exactly.
Those people in kindergarten.
Um, so the, the, the presentation was kind of two-fold, uh, number one, the easy one being that they'd rather switch and go back to, to trimester reporting. Um, but what's really a little bit more valuable is changing the language of the report card so that it is far more parent-friendly, but also more reflective, it's a standard-based report card, so more reflective of actually how we're teaching, what we're really doing, especially since that has changed with the science and reading initiatives. Um, so kind of two-fold, um, and where, where the real bulk of the work needs to be done, and, and what they are working on is, is kind of reworking the language of it. Um, but anyway, they did a phenomenal presentation, if the committee as, as a whole is interested in hearing more about, um, their visions for progress reporting at Woodland, um, they would be happy to come and present to you guys. Um, I don't know that a switch in the report cards needs to be approved by the committee, um, but that is something that I know, um, Principal Pescatelli is looking at.
So do, so do they think by going from four to three that that's gonna decrease all these ends? Is that?
So in part, yes, it gives them more time.
No, understood, I guess I'm gonna ask the other side of that question, if that's the case, should it be instead of four, going to three, is it better to do it where you get one report at the end of the, the first term, and then one at the end of the year? Like, would it make more sense to go to two as opposed to even three?
I can't, I don't know.
No, no, you know, I'm just.
But, uh, you know, I mean, I, I.
Like, I understand the rationale of why they wanna go from four to two, so that they've actually got enough time to assess for it, four to three, enough time to assess to be able to give them so good feedback.
It's important to be able to report on that and, and, and show progress over time. Um, and I think that that's part of the reworking of the standards.
Hey, look, if it did it before, if it was working before, I, I pitched it, but it sounds like we went to four.
I think, I think we went to four to standardize things across all the district, but.
And we.
I know, and, and, and in many areas, districts do it. Because so we do like the beginning of the year assessment, and then.
Oh, that makes sense.
So then they might like, because they also will do their own like a second in the classroom, because with our little kids, like, them just learning how to do assessments on the computers and that.
Yeah, oh, that makes sense.
Sometimes they'll do their own assessment, they'll tell us parents about it, be like, well, they actually do know that they did, they know how.
Right.
Alright, perfect.
That was that, um, so if you'd like more information, they did an excellent presentation that we have in share. Um, but that, I'm sure you will hear more of, from.
Somebody.
Somebody named a teacher.
Wellness?
No.
No. Sped?
No.
Technology? Mr. Fox, anything on the capital committee?
Uh, we are done until next year, chairman is present here, he can.
Athletics, we probably have to have a meeting set up in the next couple of weeks. Um, I'll touch base with the principal shorter on that, and then legislative, we don't have anything on the books right now. Uh, takes us to our public comment, which is blank. Uh, nobody signed up tonight, so let's move on to old business, uh, we, I think we talked about the yonder coaches enough, that was put on so that we could get this on the book, I think we've already. Yeah, I think we, we certainly need some more data, and then once we get that, we'll be able to have a, a more substantive discussion here in our next week.
So I do have something I'd like to add to old business.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, so, especially in light of the younger conscious presentation that we had earlier today, um, I've been doing some thinking, um, that I wanted to share with the entire committee, um, and I realized that we as a committee approved the budget last, um, you know, last meeting, and then towards, and now is in the hands of, of the town people. Um, I, and, you know, I, I do of course support the budget in its entirety, but I continue to have concerns about a small component um, that I wanted to share, and, and I have an idea, especially in light of what we heard earlier today. So my concern is regarding the addition of the second SRO. And I just wanna be clear that I do not at all oppose the rationale behind it. I, of course, having additional police officers in the district would be advantageous. Um, I'm just not a hundred percent confident that permanently adding a full-time SRO to our school district's budget is the most fiscally responsible thing, thing for us to do at this time. Um, we know that typically SRO is funded by the police department, uh, not the school district. Um, so the additional position as proposed, would it be a permanent ongoing expense to us? Um, that, that we would need to make sure that we accounted for ongoing. Um, and in the past, when a new position has been proposed, um, it's initiated via the district in response to a current need, um, and is often presented to this committee via some kind of educational presentation. Um, in regards to the SRO, that hasn't happened um, in this situation. Um, and I would love to hear from our current SRO. Um, I would love to know currently, you know, the, his daily job, day in, day out, what is it that he does, um, and, and what are his challenges? Um, and where does he need help? And how could a second, um, SRO help? Um, you know, similarly to, to what we heard from Mr. Jay Zach today. Um, and I just feel that I'm not, I, I guess I'm not convinced that the committee as a whole has done its due diligence in examining this issue as well as the possible options that we may have moving forward to address whatever the true problem is and the true objective is. So here's what I propose. I know it's in our current budget, I know there's no changing that right now. However, I also know that we don't necessarily have to spend that immediately. Um, and I don't know that we need to jump to hire a second full-time SRO immediately without first taking the entire committee, taking a closer look at the issue, and getting a few answers to, to at least some of my questions, and I don't know, if I'm barking up the wrong tree, just you can tell. Um, but, I mean, first of all, looking at comparable sized districts, how many SROs do comparably sized districts have? Um, and then if we look at other regional school districts, how do other regional school districts fund their SROs? Um, I would love to hear an educational presentation from Officer Sanders. Um, I'd love to know what his job, I'm not a police officer, so I'd love to know what his job entails, and, um, and what his challenges are. Um, and like I said, you know, what the proposal of a second SRO, how, how would that, what would that look like? How could that help? Um, and then my final question is, and something that I'd like the committee to truly consider, is if we add an additional SRO, does it have to be full-time at least immediately? The town of Brandell has offered to, on their expense to fund a part-time SRO, to train and fund a part-time SRO two days a week, full-time, two days regularly. Um, is that a good starting place? Especially because we, you know, we heard the concern about yonder park couches. We, we're talking about how we fund, we know that we've looked at this budget a thousand times, and we keep trimming from here, trimming from there, and trimming from there. Um, we, I think, I just feel that we need to look at what our needs really are, and be careful with how we spend our money, and consider that there's an offer on the table that I don't know that we as a committee have fully explored. I wanna be clear that I am not at all proposing any changes to our current SRO. Um, according to Chief Landis, when he met with the town of Brandell and the town of Collin, um, Chief Landis said that the current position um, will certainly remain in the police department budget, and that the Southwick Select Board has committed to continuing to fund that. I wouldn't at all propose any changes to that. Um, I just would like us to press pause and consider our options before we jump to hire another full-time one on, within our budget. Um, really examine what the issues are, what the goals are, and how we invest.
I, I, I don't think so either, Pam, I, I think I do wanna address one thing now, that, that we have certainly identified in, in the first SRO's cost and expenditure. The reason that the first SRO cost and expenditure has been identified to stay as unchanged was in discussion with the, how the second SRO was going to be funded. If the second SRO, if we decide that we don't wanna do that, then I cannot guarantee, and I don't think that the school committee should be guaranteeing how that expenditure looks like going forward. It has been funded by the town of Southwick since the inception of the program, because that's what they wanted to be able to do. From a financial perspective, we, as representatives from our towns, have a fiduciary responsibility to the towns that we represent. To continue to have Southwick incur that entire cost going forward, if an item I do not think we would be good stewards for the town, looking at that. And I certainly know that the finance committee from the town of Southwick has similar thoughts. Um, I don't disagree with you that some of these items might certainly be very valid to look at and to explore. Um, just to clarify from a, from a, and if, look, if we didn't follow this, or right, I'm not, I don't, I don't think we have any issues going through and, and flushing some of this out. We have certainly heard from the, from, and we can certainly get, well, we can, we probably see if we can get Chief Landis to come to one of the meetings before he retires. Um, but he has certainly made it very clear that he feels that a second full-time SRO would be valid and would be justified here for the district. He reached out and contacted the chiefs of police from both of the other towns who concurred with that assessment. Um, we just had a meeting up at Grandville last week, that everybody seemed to be in agreement that the second SRO was needed, but the challenge and the question was, is where's the funding coming from? Um, we are a regional school district. If we have an expenditure that we need to do, it is to be shared amongst the three towns according to the way that the regional agreement is set up. Contrary to what anybody wants to be able to do. That's how the regional agreement is addressed. If we wanna look at a part-time person, great, but we've heard from a number of people that if we're going to do this, having somebody full-time is the right way to do it, it creates challenges from a logistics perspective. Um, but we can certainly bring people in to get that information, I'm certainly not opposed to that.
Certainly part-time is better than nothing. Um, and we, officer, we certainly didn't say that as well, so I mean, it's, it's an option that I feel should get looked at.
Yep.
I, I don't think you're saying a problem.
Yeah.
Me, you're absolutely correct. Just because, just because it's different budget, we need to spend away. I definitely look at all those, 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 uh, variables that you mentioned. This is working historically, so we understand. Former Chief McCarty and I were attending, uh, with that, that, and then just with the training, so. And he encouraged the communities to implement, because those things ever happened in our country. So Chief McCarty and I went back, I went back to my board, and we went to them finance committee, and we made a case that we wanted SRO in our school building. And we offered it to the school, regional schools. At that time, we weren't looking at sheer expenses, we were looking at saving lives. That was the bottom saving line. And I think it's been a great. Great, uh, thing that has happened, we've had some very good, as our own officers.
And to be clear, they work with all police officers in all three towns and continue to.
Right, but their job has expanded. You know, and I think we're gonna find that I, when Chief Landis and, and Officer Sanders. Gonna find out about. Their whole ethics. And, uh, you like saying. In a perfect world. I'd like to have one in every single bill, but this isn't. It's a cost. But, uh, but I have absolutely no problem. Revealing everything. You know, I want to really, really.
Sure.
You know. Uh, uh. But I, 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 I hope it doesn't get into this. Back and forth between communities over.
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be.
It should be.
What's best in the best interest of in our just.
Our community.
And our district consists of three towns.
Right.
And it shouldn't be about, it, it shouldn't be pitting towns against each other anyway.
Right, because you already know my feeling. That, you know. Legally, this is stopping. In my opinion. You need to have a chain of being. In that office or have. Stand by them, probably that right. Uh, no matter what decision. Actually. So we're getting, yeah.
And Chief. Talked about the liaison program that we had running where. Having officers from other towns come down on the frequent or infrequent, like as long as it was structured. That was the setup, that was function. Um, but to. As the chief said, if we're gonna add another officer. Probably should be full-time, and his feeling too, and the statute clearly indicates that it's the decision of superintendent and the chief of police of the presiding town. Who is the best officer set up to perform those duties? Um, so, yeah, I mean, I, look. It's nuts, I mean, if we decide this in September or October, we want to move forward, at least we know if the budget passes, the funds are there. Um, I'm certainly not opposed to. Opening this up and, and being sure that we're making the right call. Um, but I think we need to. Be sure that we, that, I certainly don't want to have towns pitting against towns either. But I think we need to make sure that everybody is realistic and understands what the regulations and how the regional school agreement is set up. And. Just because the schools. Are here in Southwick. Does not. Indicate that costs should be allocated to one town alone. Um, so we've got to make sure we've got this in, in.
It's part of why, you know, Grandville has offered to. You know, to fund what they can of a, of an additional one.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we can certainly reach out to the chief, you try to get him on our list, we can see if we can get Officer Sanders to maybe. Grace us with a little bit of knowledge and insight into what his day looks like. Just a setup, just a heads up, Officer Sanders, that maybe something we're looking for.
What can you please?
Yeah. All right, anything else for old business? New business. Superintendent evaluation, everybody has received an email from Aaron with the breakdown of the eval. Um, as we indicated, uh, looking to get this. Um, get, uh, returned back to Aaron by the eighteenth of April. Um, so that I've got a chance to get that information compiled and I will present the evaluation. Um, summary at the May seventh meeting.
Is that our next meeting?
That is our next meeting. They've got anything else for new business? This point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. That. Can I get, can I get? I, can I get a show of? Can I get a show of hands to bring along? Aaron, let the motion, yeah, the record show.
Anyone want a copy of these?
I guess.
Thank you.